All right, it's 7:30 PM. We're going to call this regular meeting of the Rutherford Board of Education Order on March 13th, 2023. We'll ask everyone who can to please stand, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask Mr. Kelly to please take role.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Present.
Mr. Bogosian?
Present.
Mr. Conti?
Present.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Mazone?
Present.
Dr. Racine?
Here.
Mr. Spraberry?
Present.
Dr. Awadi?
Here.
You have a quorum, thank you. All right, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Rutherford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted on the bulletin board outside the borough clerk's office, mailed to The Herald, South Bergenite, and the record newspapers, and filed with the borough clerk. Hard copies of the agenda are available in the meeting office, and the agenda is posted electronically on Friday before the meeting date on the district's website at www.rutherfordschools.org. Subsequent to the meeting, a video of the meeting will be uploaded to the district's website, www.rutherfordschools.org. The video link can be found by opening the Board of Education link and clicking on Public Meetings and then Videos. So Board members in your packet, we're two sets of minutes to approve the regular meeting and executive session, minutes of February 13th, 2023. Does anyone have any comments or questions on those? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Kelly to please move those. Uh, so we're going to shift the order of a couple of things and start with our report of the student representatives. Poppy.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So to begin, spring athletes at Rutherford are, have an official close to their winter season, and they start their spring season this Thursday. Some of those sports include soccer, oh no, they have spring soccer, but track, baseball, softball, and boys and girls lacrosse. Besides athletes, other RHS kids also get the chance to change their schedules and register for their classes of 2023 and 2024. As I mentioned every report, the FBLA club members are still going strong in their Consumer Bowl competition, so they recently stayed two days in Atlantic City to compete on the state level and test their business knowledge. The AED team, or Academic Decathlon Team, is right behind them. They won a valuable win in their regional competition and recently tested in the state level last weekend. They await results, and if they do well, they can be put on the national level. Similarly, members of the RHS theater production Mean Girls crushed three-seller shows this past weekend. Lots of talent was displayed, if anyone got the chance to see. Many RHS students were proud to see their classmates and friends onstage. One final note is the artwork of RHS students in the Park Ave Tunnel. So this space connecting Park Ave to the Kip Center parking garage now showcases student artwork in their new display in hallway. Art and students from grades one through 12 are displayed, but there are plenty of RHS students with their art there, too. And a final report I have is on the picnic tables, too. So we started donations this past month. As of right now, we have close to 2,500, but we're going through till March 24th, so there's flyers around, too, if you want, if you want to support. That's all.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Bemson. Uh, just want to say that really proud of your efforts in terms of fundraising. You came to us a couple of meetings ago with ideas of that picnic table and benches outside and how they would benefit students, and sounds like you're making a lot of good progress.
Yeah.
I do have results of the Academic Decathlon.
Oh, you have the results?
Yeah, they were, they came out late last week, okay?
Yeah.
And, um, we did not get a three-peat, okay? I mean, probably better because Pat Riley has three-peat, uh, patented, and we'd have to pay him a fee if we actually did it, but we did very well. The Academic Decathlon Team placed third in the state, which, um, does qualify them not to go to the Nationals, but to participate in the online, um, as a third-place team. So, um, only the state winner gets to physically go to the National, uh, but they get to compete in, um, in like a second tier online. So a very successful, uh, season for them, and I don't want to highlight a whole bunch of students, but one student in particular, Kia Perik, had the highest-scoring speech in the state, which is, um, phenomenal. And at the dinner where they announced the awards, she had to recreate the speech in front of about 150, uh, people, um, you know, her peers from around the state, and she did an outstanding job. So congratulations again to, um, you know, Mr. DeRozne and the team for, uh, this is, I guess, now the fourth year in a row that they've qualified in one shape or form to compete in the national level, which is quite an accomplishment. So congratulations to them.
Questions or comments from Board members? Mr. Spraberry?
So I attended the, uh, high school PTA.
Oh, yeah.
And Mr. Morano was, uh, excited that you stopped by his office, like, six times that day for the, uh, for the tables.
Oh, yeah.
So he was, he was really pumped up that you were so excited about it and what you were doing, and, you know, committed you in front of everybody for the effort in doing that, getting out there for the students. So at the PTA, was super excited to help.
Thank you.
How many tables use the table?
Around four, yeah. Right there.
Yeah, if they can raise more money, they'll buy, they had, they got two proposals for, for four and six. Mr. Morano did.
Yeah.
Ms. Ahmed?
Yeah, I was so glad, um, you mentioned about the walkway between the parking lot and the, you know, main avenue there in Rutherford. I've lived here for 30-something years, and I was always afraid to go through that tunnel because it was so dark and, uh, I never used to park in that parking lot. And the other day, I had to go through, and I was so shocked. It was so pleasant. I felt like I was like in, like a department store. It was lit up. I was so glad, looking at the pictures, and I know some of the kids in the high school, I believe, painted it, and I was so proud.
Yeah.
So thank you and thank the kids that did it, okay? Meant a lot. The artwork was excellent. The artwork from all the kids was just excellent. Very professional, you know?
Yeah, I walked through, it was really pretty. You're right, it didn't feel like a hallway.
No.
Like, between the parking lot, it was really nice, yeah.
Wonderful addition.
Yeah, just, uh, for the Board to know, and the public, uh, communications people, our public relations people are putting together a piece, working with Mr. Ursulici on that, uh, on the artwork, not only there, but some of the other artwork that's been around town. Remember, we had some in the real estate office on, um, Park Ave earlier in the year and, um, and, you know, back in the buildings, a lot of the school buildings now in the Board Office, we put artwork up. So they're going to do a little piece, um, to, as a press release, uh, which will be good to give the students the credit. And while you mentioned the play, I thought the play was fabulous, and, um, I just also want to mention that the Union School Play, which was originally scheduled for this coming weekend, is now going to be in April, I think it's 28th and 29th, um, and that's Legally Blonde, I believe, is the play.
What are they doing?
What, Legally Blonde?
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, Legally Blonde, okay. So that'll be the end of April instead of, uh, next week.
Well, as long as we're on that, the program is great. Danny Fentchek and, uh, Amelia Pearl-Marter did a fabulous job, as well as everybody else. It was, I, I, I didn't know what to expect, but it was so much better than I thought it was going to be. It was really, really fabulous.
Any other comments from Ms. Bemson?
The show was awesome.
Yeah.
A couple of us attended it the first night, and it was just spectacular.
It was really good, yeah.
Everybody did an amazing job.
And thank you for your contribution with the lighting.
Yeah, I did nothing. And the kids did it all. It was really, it sounded great, looked great, the acting was awesome.
And Henry Ursulici doing the soundboard?
Yeah.
He's only a freshman.
No, I, I, I would have to say that I, having seen probably 120, 90 of these, you know, uh, you know, it's one of the best ones I've seen. And even, maybe the, the couple that I did a cameo role in back in the day were better, you know, because of my appearance, but other than that, um, the, uh, I think it was one of the best I've seen. And, uh, and, and it was one of those where, you know, everything came together. It wasn't just a performance or two, it was, you know, the set and the lights and the sound, and it just really was, was a good show. So, uh, congratulations, and, and I did extend those comments, uh, to the people involved, but let the students know as well that
Yeah.
the Board and I, uh, all are in mutual agreement.
Really enjoy it.
Were you talking Daddy Warbucks, or?
No, I, I was, uh, I was, my, my best role was the mayor in Bye Bye Birdie. See, I always took a role where I had to have something in my hand, so I didn't have to memorize lines. So, so like I was reading a proclamation or conducting a wedding or, you know, yeah, that was my, and then I, we did a, uh, It's a Wonderful Life, but it was a stage version, a little different than the movie. Now Santa Claus actually appeared in. I, I came in as Santa Claus.
Nice.
Yeah. And a couple of other little walk-ons.
One, one thing I wanted to mention, um, I, uh, went with my daughter on Saturday. She came home and we went to see Mean Girls in the Matinee, and, you know, you think of athletics and you think about the bond that, uh, student athletes have with one another and they form a team, and, you know, it, it really transcends into a lot of different areas, and watching these performing arts students of different generations who still know each other, talking to each other and, uh, afterward, and having bonds even after they graduate is really, really special. It's great to have all these different opportunities, uh, in different areas.
Yeah, I know a couple of kids on the, in the theater are super close, like, the whole high school, like, theater, I don't know what you would call it, like, group, super tight, so, yeah. I think that's why it was so, it was like really good, like, you could see them so connected onstage, you know?
Yeah, that's a great point. Any other comments or, uh, questions from Ms. Bemson? All right, well, hearing none, thank you so much for your report. Um, you can feel free to stay if you like, we have some special presentations, but if you have commitments, we also understand that as well, so thank you and have a great evening.
Thanks, Poppy.
Thank you. Thanks, Poppy, thank you.
All right, uh, so we have two special presentations this evening, and we're actually going to start, if it's okay, Mr. Healy, we're going to start with your presentation on policy process. Ooh, there we go. And then there was sound.
Should we move out of the way, or?
Uh, so we'll move out of the way. I just want to start up front by thanking Mr. Healy. You know, I think one of the things that came back on our Board self-evaluation is continued, continuing to make sure we're educated about policy and policy process, and as the Chair of our Policy Committee, Mr. Healy's taken it seriously to prepare this presentation for us this evening. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yeah, the intent is just that, uh, I think we collectively, after the Board assessment, thought a brief overview, and, you know, the intent here is to start a, start the conversation, not necessarily drill down on any particular, uh, bylaw policy and, uh, or regulation, but really to, uh, just discuss the origin of the policies and how they're incorporated into the district, give us all some background. The first piece is, uh, um, as far as district policy and what gives the Board of Ed the authority and power with the, of course, Administration and Superintendent, is District Policy 120. And, uh, I put it up there in part, but, uh, it's just that, that the Board of Ed and the district's administration has given the authority and responsibility to develop and implement policy within the district through, uh, the New Jersey Education, uh, New Jersey Statutes 18A, which is the education statutes. And, uh, that's spelled out actually in, as you can see, in the Bylaw section. But the roles are, uh, as far as policy oversight are just that, the Superintendent Administration develops the policies and, uh, carries out the policies through development and implementation of regulations, although there could be regulations that are sent to us. So the Board's role is responsible for evaluating effectiveness of the policies and the, their implementation with the Superintendent. So that's, uh, where we get our authority to do so. Um, page four, yeah, the, uh, the next, um, source, or the, the source of, of, uh, the bylaws, well, policy and regulations come from a number of organizations within the state plus the federal government. And, uh, the statutes are developed by the Department of Education, uh, the Education Commissioner, the State Board of Education, and, uh, there's also Administration Code. And to add on to that, there's also decisional law, which those agencies are involved in, which is the Commissioner of Education again, uh, the State Board of Education, the School Ethics Commission, the State Board of Examiners, and also state and federal, uh, uh, initiate policy also. So, uh, that said, it then filters into the New Jersey state government, and, uh, they then issue, uh, through the Administrative Code, uh, and make it law, and that filters into the districts. However, if you look at point number one, um, there is a service, Straus ESME, which I think you've heard us talk about, and Straus ESME does interpret those, uh, policy and regulations, and with that, uh, the, uh, interpretation then comes to the district, which then the administration, uh, actually disseminates to the, into, uh, the district, to the administration in the district, and, uh, that's how then, uh, the policy and regulations are formulated and go into the manuals, and that's how they are then, uh, passed to us in meetings, and we are, uh, then, uh, you know, our role is then to review them and approve them. So, uh, there is another way also that, uh, new policy and revisions could come into, uh, our review, and, um, that's in District Policy 131. And, uh, within 131, it spells out the adoption procedure, and, uh, if you look at these five steps, uh, step two and three are really, uh, the steps where, um, anyone on the Board could actually make a recommendation for, uh, bylaw or, uh, a new or revision to bylaw, uh, policy or regulations. But, uh, as you can see, number two, it's up to the discretion of the Board President to make a recommendation, which that recommendation will then go to the Superintendent, uh, to re, uh, for a referral to either review it or draft, you know, the proposal. So, uh, that examination goes on for anything that's within, you know, our district. Uh, but the other, uh, steps, uh, one, three, uh, one, four, five certainly are our, uh, review process, which again, the Straus ESME service in this case would send us the, uh, policies and regulations that should be applied, and they indicate if they're mandatory or So that's the process itself. Any questions on this, as far as the process? You know, we, we, we see it here at the meeting, and we get them in our notes, but is there anything else anyone wants to discuss about it?
The Straus ESME, do, is there, how many do other, do, do the majority of districts in, in New Jersey use that service?
There's, uh, 600 school districts approximately in New Jersey, uh, over 500 use it.
Only how many?
Over 500 use it.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, uh, close to 90% use it. Uh, the others use School Board Association. Uh, nobody goes alone. Some may have their own attorney, but then that's a costly proposition. The difference with Straus ESME and New Jersey, for years, we did New Jersey school boards, I'm going to say 30, 35 years, because that's as long as my history is, but, um, the difference with New Jersey school boards is, uh, you have to go and seek out, um, consistently to see anything that's been revised, renewed, mandated. Uh, Straus ESME, uh, at a minimum does a quarterly, um, send, sends to us, but if anything pops in between, they send it, um, so it's, um, it's, it's much more user-friendly. Uh, Straus ESME is, uh, owned and managed by, uh, staffed by attorneys who educate, who specialize in educational law and, uh, either current or former school administrators. So it's strictly an educational outlet, and they have a seat at the table as, as the, as the saying goes, on the, uh, with the Governor's Office, the Jersey School Boards, uh, so they're, they're a very active lobbyist and, uh, player in those discussions. So, um, it, it has made our, um, policy process much more fluid, much more accurate, much more timely, and, um, far and away, they're, they're, there's nobody even close to them in the state.
Mr. Healy, before that, uh, you would get the raw, um, policy and, and/or regulation from the state?
No, from New Jer, New Jersey School Boards. The state doesn't ever give, give policy to you. The state will just say, uh, there's a, there's a mandate about, um, well, for example, uh, the new threat assessment team is coming up. Part of the law says that you have to have a policy in place. Doesn't tell, it doesn't tell you what should be in that policy. What Straus ESME will do and what New Jersey School Boards would do, right, is they would, they would draft a, a sample policy for my review and ultimately your review. Without a, without a, uh, a, a, a team like that, uh, an advisor or consultant like that, someone would have to write the policy, and you would have to be certain that you've hit all the legal, you know, points. So, um, you, it, no one, I, I don't know any school district that would ever be foolish enough to do policy on their own.
What does that service cost us?
It's about, uh, $5,000 a year.
$5,000?
Yeah. The first year, there was a, there was a, a larger cost because we had to take everything, I mean, that was a mammoth job. If you ever, up in my office, I'll show you the binder, you know, online, it doesn't look that big. On the binders are, like, that's why I'm having hip issues, I carry the, the binder. Um, it, it was a mammoth job to transfer from the school boards. All the, the numbering changed, the language changed, um, and, uh, that year was a bigger cost, but since then, it's just a maintenance type of, of fee on the budget. But no, you see, the thing you have to understand about policy, we, a lot of times, we may use that word incorrectly. We say, oh, you know, it's, it's the policy of the, um, of, you know, of the tennis team that if you miss X number of practices is, that's practice. That's a practice, that's a regu, that's a rule. Policy is the law of the land. I can't violate policy, the Board can't violate policy. You, you, that's the law of the land. The only, the only time you can have a waiver to a policy is when policy allows a waiver within the policy, if that makes sense. For example, attendance, right? The student is absent X number of days, he goes into non-credit, but in it, there is a appeal process within the policy. If, if you don't have that, it's black and white, okay? It's, it's the law of the land. So that's why I say, you know, it's like, it's, it's, it's legal. You need to have a, a service of experts who can write to make sure you've hit, uh, every, if you look at the, every citation, if you look at the end of policies, you'll see they're all citing Title 18A or, or the Administrative Code 6, or a case law. It's not just happenstance. So, um, we're very pleased, and I hope you are, uh, with Straus ESME, because it keeps us timely and accurate and, um, in line. And if someone ever came forward, and it's happened a couple of times, I can't think off the top of my head of when, but it's happened within the last few years, where maybe an administrator says, you know, we don't have a policy on XYZ, can we look into it? I call Straus ESME, and I say, do you have a policy about this? And here's what we're looking for, and then they'll send it to me. So it's really not, um, it, it's really something that, that we need.
Both ways.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we've established a good relationship with the folks down there. Uh, you know, uh, we call them on a first-name basis, they're, they're always willing to help us give advice on something, uh, it's, it's a good service. They also run as part of our, uh, deal. I know, uh, Mr. Kelly's gone to a couple, I think, uh, we've had even some other staff go to a couple. They run, uh, workshops a couple of times a year on things that pop up, uh, in policy. So it's, you know, so how to interpret the policy, how to, how to actually implement it. So it's a valuable service. But, but that's essentially the process, and, and what is done is it's taken some of the, um, um, I think, you know, some of the, some of the guesswork out of it, you know, with, sometimes with, with the school boards, we had to go searching, you know, and this is a much, this gives us a nice guided path to go on.
And prior to using New Jersey School Boards, we wrote policy, and you remember all the trouble we got in that?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, right. Yeah, and that was, I think we wrote that on clay tablets, if I'm not mistaken. No, those days are gone, you can't do anymore. Everything's gotten so, so, um, you know, so legalese, everything is so nuanced, and, you know, and, and as Mr. Healy said, a lot of it comes out of court cases, a lot of it comes out of, of issues that pop up, right? I mean, look, we all know, we could look at the HIP policy, came from that, uh, suicide of a student 20 years ago, uh, from, I think it was at Rutgers, right? That created law, the law created policy. It didn't come from people sitting around saying, hey, we should come up with, with a plan. It came, so, so you're looking at, um, you're looking at a lot of things that are, are just in law that you need the guidance on. The days of writing policy are long gone.
Um, the, uh, on the district online website, uh, has a search, and, uh, these are the categories that, the sections that it, uh, puts in the policies, and, uh, there is a keyword search, which, you know, I don't know if we're going to just be able to do that tonight, but I could work with anyone who wants to know about that. It's pretty intuitive, but, uh, we could talk about that. But, uh, just fun facts, uh, let me just pick randomly, uh, how many bylaws do we think, Mr. Bogosian, how many bylaws do you think there are?
I think there are 34 bylaws.
Amazing. Policies, uh...
What was your question again?
Mr. Mazone, how many policies do you think there are out there?
Gosh, I, I think by last count, there's got to be 400 or more policy total, at least.
Very impressive, very impressive. Last category, which is the toughest probably, how many regulations are there? Dr. Racine, how many do you think there were?
About 160, a little bit less probably.
Yeah, very good. Inconceivable, that's amazing.
This is truly amazing, this is truly amazing.
Don't ask any more questions.
Don't ask me.
But just to give you a clue, but, uh, then again, you go on the search, and, uh, I mean, you could go down sequentially within section, or, uh, like Mr. Healy's saying, sometimes you want to, uh, drill down to a policy, at least what's online, you could do that.
Look, one of the things that happen anytime an issue comes up, a lot of the policies that we deal with are frequent flyers, they come up, you know, right? So, any of our administrators or myself, we, you know, we're well-familiar with, with, with them, but when something comes up that's a little bit off the beaten path, uh, the first thing we do is check to see if there's a policy, because if there is, that's what you have to follow. I mean, if there isn't, then you have to use, you know, your, your judgment, your knowledge, and, uh, you know, your collegiality with other people, how do we handle this, or past practice, you know, things like that, right? But if it's policy, you have to follow those steps.
And these have been built over
Oh, yeah.
decades, right?
Yeah, right. Yeah, the, you know, the, so the, you know, grading policy, attendance policy, uh, suspension policy, you know, whatever the case may be, it's, 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 it's the law. So, you know, those are some of the ones that come up all the time, we're familiar with them, but if something comes up that isn't, we, we check. And if there isn't a policy, that's when we have to look to say, you know, how do we, how do we handle this, this situation? So, um, you know, it's something that all of our administrators, um, provide for us. The nice thing, on our website, like, um, as Healy said, the policy's available for anybody, you could do a search, you could find it. What Straus ESME provides for the administrators is a, uh, interactive type of, of website where we could get a lot more detail, a lot quicker, we could get a lot of background, we could jump to, uh, uh, the various codes and the Title 18A and get the law if we need it. So, uh, it, they provide that service, too. Not a bad deal for the few thousand dollars a year that, uh, they provide us.
So if anyone wants to know more about the search, the district website search, let me know, and we can just do a quick, uh, review of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nice job.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you for participating. Thank you, Mr. Rutherford.
Yeah, and I will say one last thing, just, you know, because I, and every time I send a, a group of policies out, I add the line about it's been reviewed by the appropriate administrators, supervisors, and, okay, so what we do with that is, you know, we take the language that comes from Straus ESME, and I ask whoever is involved in it, for example, if it has something to do with athletics, I have Mr. Frazier, Mr. Morano, you know, look at it. Whoever the appropriate, if special education, you know, Ms. Howen's looking at it. And, uh, you know, um, and I tell them, is, is there something here that you don't think we should be doing? If so, let's give a call down Strauss Esme, talk about this. Uh, should we change the language a little bit? Uh, to make it more, you know, homegrown and say within the confines. So it's not as though we're just, you know, just cutting and pasting everything. You know, there's always that dialogue and discussion, uh, to make sure that, um, we're staying within the regulations that we have to, but it, it jives with what we're doing. And anything that there is choice on, Strauss Esme always allows that choice. They'll say, you, you have to have this policy, but you could choose number eight, letter A, you could choose letter B and how you go about it. And again, those are the discussions that we have, um, with the administration and the supervisors. And when I, uh, send it to the, uh, the policy committee, I'll say, we're choosing letter A because it's more in line with our past practice or it's more in line with our student population. So it, it's, it's dogmatic, but there is some maneuverability within the policy. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Healy, because I think it was good to share that with everybody.
Thanks for your time preparing that. I don't know who I'm more impressed with, Mr. Healy or Mr. Bogosian, Mr. Mazzone and Doc, or Dr. Racine?
I'm impressed they remembered their lines without reading from a book like I did when I was in this place.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Healy before we move on? Okay, hearing none, then we are going to move on to the other special presentation, which is the, uh, budget draft presentation.
Thank you. We'll start as we usually do with the, uh, review of the, uh, budget objectives. In this case, we did add a, uh, we did add one this year because it's been a pressing issue for everybody. But, uh, we need to address inflationary pressures, uh, throughout the whole, uh, throughout the entire budget. So we'll talk about that a little bit more in a little bit. Uh, we maintain and build upon our current program offerings. We say this not every year, but most years, this is largely a maintenance budget. There's not a whole lot of new initiatives in here. But because of cost increases that are unavoidable, uh, you know, the budget does grow for that reason. So we'll talk about that too. Uh, we always want to provide for facilities improvements and maintenance and repair. Uh, we are in some aging facilities here and I think, uh, our staff does a great job of keeping them up to date and keeping things running. But, you know, anything can happen on any given day and it does. So, uh, so it's an ongoing challenge. And we also review our staffing needs. We'll get into that a little more too. Source of funds, uh, we basically have, uh, four sources of funds. Local tax levy is the largest. That's usually around ninety percent of our budget. Uh, also the state aid, federal aid and miscellaneous. If you can read this, this is, uh, the local tax levy for next year, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, the, uh, we'll go into a little more detail on this, but the, uh, School Funding Reform Act of two thousand and eight did provide some restrictions on the local tax levy, uh, increase from year to year specifically. It mandates no more than a two percent increase year over year. Uh, there are some allowable adjustments to that. So as you look here, we start off this year, the current year, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, our, uh, tax levy is a little over forty-five million dollars. A two percent cap is another nine hundred thousand. We are looking, uh, to use an allowable adjustment and I go into more detail on that in a second, which will bring our base up to forty-six point seven million for twenty-three, twenty-four. I will let you know that there is an offset to that. Our debt service, uh, tax levy is going down. Going down by about sixty thousand dollars. So if we just look at the general operating fund, uh, the tax levy would be going up around three point six percent as proposed. But with the, uh, the offset of the reduction in the debt service tax levy, the net impact is a three point two percent increase. That equates to approximately nineteen dollars a month per average house, household. Uh, the average household has an assessed value of about four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Allowable adjustments were provided through the School Funding Reform Act of two thousand and eight. That was effective for fiscal year two thousand and nine. Uh, this did, as I mentioned, mandated a two percent cap on the annual tax levy increases plus certain allowable adjustments if applicable. Uh, I've listed a few of them here. The health benefits premium increases, um, enrollment increases above state determined levels, responsibility shifted to or from another entity and deferred pension contributions. Those last two don't pertain to us. They have never pertained to us. The enrollment increases, we have taken advantage of that once before. And the health benefits premium increases, we have taken advantage of that, uh, I believe, six times. And if the board so approves, the seventh time this year, uh, since, uh, two thousand and nine, since this became effective. The point is to recognize that there are certain expenditures that rise faster than the rate of inflation. Uh, the two percent is justifiable. It makes some sense in a low inflation economy. We're not there now. We have a much higher inflation. We're not in a low inflation by any measure economy. So, uh, some of our costs are increasing faster than a two percent tax levy cap will allow, will, will, uh, support. Um, and keep in mind too, as I said, the tax levy is about ninety percent of our budget. So a two percent increase and in our tax levy actually equates to about a one point eight percent increase in our budget. So two separate concepts there, but, uh, it's not, it's not even as much as two percent really. The, the net impact is about one point eight percent. So as I said, the two percent cap is supportable in times of low inflation, but this, this, these are not those days. So, um, the enrollment is not an issue for us this year, but the health benefits is. As you know, this year in twen, and the, the state health benefits plan operates on a calendar year basis. So for twenty twenty-three, premiums went up by fifteen point six percent. Uh, we didn't budget for that. Nobody foresee that, foresaw that coming. Um, but we have to absorb that. So that becomes our new base for next year. Now we're being advised for twenty twenty-four that we should plan on a twelve to fifteen percent increase in addition to what was already in, uh, in place for this year. So our budget includes a thirteen percent, just because I'm trying to cram numbers in here. But, uh, but as I said before, this reflects the fact that these costs are rising a lot faster than even, even the rate of inflation as it is these days. And I should, uh, mention also that over the last five years, the state health benefits plan has actually reduced premiums a couple of times. Uh, we didn't budget for that either because we didn't know about it, but I think that's fairly foolish to, to plan on a, to budget for a decrease in premiums. But it would, and as you know, last February, they declared a benefits holiday, so they didn't charge any premium. So now it would appear they're sitting on a, in a financial hole and, uh, and this is how they're going to get out of it. So, uh, these are, you know, things we have no impact on, but they do impact us. So, uh, so the allowable adjustment that you saw was seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. That's related to the, uh, health benefits premium. As I mentioned, health insurance premiums went up fifteen point six percent for this calendar year. We're anticipating thirteen percent for next calendar year. Uh, bus transportation has also gone up. Fuel has gone up. Uh, staffing has gone up because, uh, it's been very difficult to find, uh, bus drivers and bus aides. Uh, the cost of, uh, maintenance, um, all of those things have gone up. So we have, uh, paid just this year in twenty twenty-three, a thirty-five percent increase. Um, I've been told just to plan a three percent for next year. So that's what I've done, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed. Uh, salaries, uh, across the board, we have a three percent increase that was, uh, negotiated with all three associations. But that is also becomes a, uh, macroeconomic issue because that's what it takes to run the district and to, and to keep good employees and to, and to, uh, you know, you have a good program. We need good employees. So, uh, uh, so that's, and that's carved in stone. That's a contractual issue at this point. Um, as I've mentioned before, this year, or for rather for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're in the third year of the cycle where the first year we negotiate with the RSA and the RAA, the second year we negotiate with the REA and then the third year we get a pass. So, uh, so, uh, we know what those salaries are so we can budget accordingly. Other insurances have gone up by fifteen percent. That's what I was told to expect. That's our property, our casualty, our workers' comp, our directors and officers, um, all of that. That's about sixty-five thousand dollars. That's a fifteen percent equates to sixty-five thousand dollars. So, um, and these are just the major ones. Of course, the inflationary pressures are hitting us across the board. Uh, second category was state aid. Uh, last year, or rather for this year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we have two point nine million dollars in state aid. I'll have some more information on that next. The state is providing at this point an increase for next year of three point one four eight million dollars. That's a seven point seven percent increase, almost two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're very grateful for that. I don't know how they come up with that number, but, uh, I was talking to somebody from another district nearby and they received several million dollars more next year. So, uh, certainly don't want to bite the hand that feeds us. Uh, having said that, this is a relatively small part of the budget, maybe around five percent generally on a year-to-year basis. Uh, this slide, if you can see this, um, this goes back about twenty years, twenty-one years. This is the history of our state aid in that time. You'll see the little blue boxes at the bottom of each column. That's the state aid number. You see it's relatively flat year after year after year. There's not a big swing in there. There was a bit of a dip in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. That's when Governor Christie came in and he made some, uh, wholesale changes to, uh, to funding. And it's, you know, gradually increased, but all in all, it's, uh, you know, remained relatively flat. The orange bars, the taller orange bars are our, uh, general operating budget year after year after year. Again, you see a little dip there in two thousand and ten, eleven, and that's because of the, uh, state aid cuts that we received that year. Uh, so we had to reduce the budget accordingly. So that's, uh, you know, creeping back up, um, which, I mean, in, in a perfect world, that's what we'd expect to see. We know costs go up. So we'd expect to see a nice, easy climb. The gray line going throughout the middle is the state aid as a percent of the budget. So you see the last ten or twelve years, it's pretty flat at about six percent. This year it crept up, it's creeping up to about six point one percent. But it's been flat since, uh, Governor Christie's time in office. Uh, and it was, you know, and twenty years ago, of course, it was up at a full ten percent of our budget. So now we're hovering around six percent, but, uh, so. Miscellaneous sources, there are, we do get some federal aid there. We get, uh, money for certain grant programs. The budget for that is not too challenging. We don't get any numbers from the state and we won't, but we're told what we can expect based on what we received this year. So we budgeted accordingly. Uh, miscellaneous sources, we have excess surplus. This is a surplus that was, uh, earned in, uh, the last fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and this has to go back to the taxpayers in the form of a, of a source of funds in the budget. So this has to be used. It's five hundred thousand dollars. It was five hundred thousand dollars last year as well. Uh, capital reserve, we'll talk about that a little bit more. This is money that the board has been able to sock away for capital projects. Uh, I already mentioned, you know, the buildings and the, uh, you know, the state of the buildings. Uh, I think we do a very good job of maintaining them and keeping them up to date, but there are things that have to be done. Roofs don't last forever, no matter how well you maintain them. So we'll talk more about that two point nine million dollar number there. Uh, Bulldog Academy is up and running and we'll be, uh, we'll be expecting some funds out of that. Uh, mostly I'd, I'd like to put those into capital reserve. Other is just interest income, uh, tuition revenues. There's not a whole lot of that relatively speaking, but that's, but we do factor that all into the budget. And then the use of funds, we talked about some of this stuff already, but, uh, you know, the challenges and the some, and the assumptions, the staffing and the salary increases, um, health benefits premiums, technology needs, uh, the the board strategic planning committee has met several times in the last year to talk about, uh, what's needed from a technology standpoint. This budget does include, um, uh, upgrades to the firewall to, uh, the, the, uh,
Core switches.
The core switches. Thank you. Those have been funded by, uh, through the use of leases. Uh, so we'll be, uh, pursuing a five-year lease on those. Um, so it saves us a little money in the budget, but it, you know, it'll be, of course, it'll be in the budget for the next several years. And, uh, out of district placements, we'll talk about more of that more in a second. Facilities maintenance, uh, I've talked about that already. Out of district placements, uh, we do have an obligation to, uh, provide an education to all of our students. Uh, sometimes we get, um, classified students, special education students that we are unable to educate. We don't have the resources to do that in this environment, so we have to send them out of district. So when that happens, we, we pursue other service providers. The South Bergen Jointure Commission is a public school district. And they, they run a number of programs, uh, relatively inexpensively. So we look to them to see if they can accommodate our students, uh, or other public school districts. Some of them do, we do as well. Uh, we don't get a whole lot of, uh, tuition revenue out of that, but, uh, we can expect that if another public school in, say Bergen County, and it doesn't have to be Bergen County, um, has a program that will benefit one of our children, then we can send them there and, you know, there will be a tuition fee, but probably less than the private schools with students with disabilities. And that's our third option there. And those can get very pricey, but sometimes that is the only choice. So we factored all that into the budget too. We've looked at, uh, the students' needs on a case-by-case basis, on a student-by-student basis. So we have a sense of where they need to be going and what kind of services they need and we budget accordingly. Missed that one. There's a little history again, the twenty years or so on, uh, out of district placements. The blue bars are the tuition dollar amounts year after year. And the, so we're up around, uh, five million dollars and we've been hovering there for the last few years, for the last ten years or so. Uh, the red line is the number of students who are placed, special needs students who are placed out of district. Uh, right now, uh, the number is seventy-four, budgeted for next year. Uh, it's been closer to eighty. In fifteen, sixteen, it was a slightly over eighty. We do look to, and we consider the possibility of implementing programs of our own in district, uh, if that's cost-effective. Um, so, uh, and that's what happened back in sixteen, seventeen. So we did create a program or two and brought kids back. I think that was the preschool program that year. So.
Well, yeah, in fifteen, sixteen, you see the highest bar there. We, uh, that's when we began the preschool, the eighteen to twenty-one program, some of the, um, multi-disabled programs that we have and we brought students back. Um, you know, there, there's only a certain, uh, there's a certain limit to, uh, students that you can bring back to district, uh, in a comprehensive, uh, school setting. You know, there are certain classifications that no matter how much you, you may know, it's great for the student to be here and it's great for the budget to be here. It just can't function. Um, one of the things I do want to mention, uh, you know, you notice that the, um, you know, the number of students is lower, but the, not proportionally lower to where the tuition is because tuitions are going higher and higher. You know, that's another thing we talked about with the inflationary, uh,
Yes.
world we're in. I also, you know, without saying anything about students, there is, right now, there are three students that we are currently, um, looking at through the child study team who just may need an out-of-district placement. They're currently here. They may need one. So this is a very volatile and, um, um, number to project. And some tuitions are thirty or forty or fifty thousand dollars. Some are a hundred, hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, so it doesn't take many students to really get that, that bar going up again. It's money that we need to spend, we have to spend. We, it's our moral and legal obligation to, to spend. Uh, but it's, but again, it impacts the budget. I mean, we're talking here about, about budget and it impacts the budget greatly.
Thank you. Personnel, a pretty quiet year for personnel. If you remember last year, we had about eleven retirements. Um, and we, we needed some staffing, uh, to, uh, for the pier pond school because we had those new, uh, new rooms. This year, we're only looking at, uh, three retirements as we know right now and we're only looking to replace two of those. That's about a That's about a hundred thousand dollars or so breakage. That's a conservative number. Um, and we need to add two point oh full-time equivalents in special ed teaching staff. Uh, as usual, teaching, uh, teacher assistance, we continue to look at consistently throughout the year. Those needs change frequently, so I think the budget covers that right now and covers any unanticipated needs, but, uh, we continue to keep an eye on that throughout the year.
If I can, again, just for the sake of understanding the concern about the budget this year, and there was serious concerns that I had and Mr. Kelly had, and I think many of us had going into the budget process because of the spiraling rising costs and, um, but, you know, staffing is, is a challenge right now. Um, the statewide, nationwide, um, number of applicants have greatly dropped, um, and it becomes a very competitive market. So when you're looking at the ability to bring people in at a fair price, meaning equated to their years of experience uh, on a guide, um, that's not as easy to do right now. Because they'll go down the road and get placed a little higher because there's only a handful of qualified people up there. So I anticipate that it's going to be a struggle, um, to come close to whatever breakage we think we're going to have. Um, to, when, when we're in a market that's a very, a very thin market and a very competitive market. And I'm seeing it already with the replacements we've had, uh, this year. And if you track some of the salaries that we've, we've had to bring people in at, they're, I mean, they're fair and they're reasonable, but, uh, two or three years ago, there would have been a, a greater give and take in the negotiation for that salary than there is now.
I'll just mention too, that the state requirements when budgeting or that if you are replacing a teacher or you're hiring a new teacher, whether it's a new position or a replacement position, we have to budget them on step one. Now, in most cases, I say, the majority of cases, that's not even reasonable, but, uh, but that's what they see. And in fact, the county office does look to make sure that we budgeted these people at step one. Um, so we have to do what we have to do. I'll just leave it at that. Uh, facilities needs, uh, this is what's in the budget. This is the use of capital reserve. This is not part of the tax levy. It is not part of the general operating budget. This is our funds that we have set aside over the years for this exact purpose, to, uh, do specific projects that are needed throughout the district. Um, so this is what's in the budget right now. Uh, the high school, the field renovation, two point three million dollars. Well, I'll get into that more in a second, but, uh, the rest I can just run right through. Uh, the high school, the two-thirty gym upstairs, uh, we've had some damage to the gym floor through, uh, uh, some window issues and also some plumbing, uh, steam leak from, uh, the locker room downstairs. Looking to get that all taken care of at a cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Looking to do a roof replacement at Union Middle School, the Springfield Avenue wing. This is a, uh, multi-year, uh, multi-phase project that we're, we're, we embarked on last year and actually several years before that. Last year, if you remember, we did the roof over the Belford Avenue wing. So this is the next step there. Uh, that's a cost of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, Washington, we're going to look to, uh, replace the audiovisual system at, in the multipurpose room at a cost of sixty thousand dollars. Also, the, uh, partial wood floor replacement in that same multipurpose room. This is out of, uh, coming from Hurricane Idaho. We got a little damage out of that and we're, uh, which is something we were not able to get to last summer. Uh, for the maintenance department, we do need a new pickup truck and we're also getting a plumbing snake. That'll save us some, uh, uh, some calls to the sewer people, uh, throughout the year. We also have an SDA assessment, assessment. The Schools Development Authority is a quasi-state organization, um, and they manage a lot of the school building projects. Uh, starting about fifteen years ago, they started, uh, assessing all the districts, all of their client districts for a part of their debt. Um, this was ruled legal and so we've been on the hook for this one, seventy-five thousand dollars every year, but I take that out of capital reserve. Um, the field renovation, we're talking about this field directly outside here. Um, as I said, it's a two point three million dollar budget. Scope includes the installation of turf. It includes irrigation, uh, new fencing and repairs as needed to the retaining wall on Home and Fairview Avenues. Um, that project, uh, this is in the very preliminary stages. All we have is that cost estimate, that two point three million dollars was the upper end of a range given to us by professional field installers. Um, so that's what it is. Take, it's the upper end of that range. But the project will not proceed without discussion with the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Uh, they will need to recommend it to the full board and will need the approval of the board. So this will be subject to plenty of discussion as we move through the process. We are attempting to move through the process now, it's just a little slower than we'd like, but, uh, um, if for some reason the board rejects it or we can't do it this year, then the money will go back into capital reserve and it stays there. So this is just putting a placeholder in the budget. Again, this is not impacted, it's not impacting the operating budget or the tax levy. This is all coming from capital reserve. But in order to proceed with this, it has to be in the budget and it has to be, uh, discussed. And you'll see on your agenda, it's noted in the, uh, the motion to approve the preliminary budget. It has to be presented in that, in that, uh, in that format. So that's what we're doing.
Another slide, uh, the, the other slide, we went through some of that stuff already. There's one more slide on the field. This one, yeah.
Yeah.
But you, you went through, so I, I'd like to comment a little bit about, about the field, uh, in terms of, of budget. Um, you know, uh, the field itself has been a subject of, um, a great deal of discussion. Um, as you recall, it was par the first referendum that did not pass. Um, you may also, um, recall, um, well, I mean, going back to two thousand and five, pre-two thousand and five, the field was never great, but it was never that bad. In the, in fact, back in the, uh, early nineties, when I was the, um, boys', uh, soccer coach here uh, and, and Memorial Field was being redone, not, not the try-on field, the, the grass field. Um, we had to play our varsity season out here. Field was a little small. It was bigger than it is now because the two thousand and five renovation took away some of the field. Um, and it wasn't great, but it was playable. Uh, you, our athletic team since two thousand and five, since the renovation, um, which, uh, two things happened. The staging area was bigger than the staging area we have now and the topsoil that was replaced, uh, was, was, I don't know where they got it from, okay, but, uh, you, you could find almost anything but dirt and soil in it. Um, our athletic teams don't go on it. Uh, now they're forced to because of the additional lacrosse. Uh, we don't have fields enough to practice, so they're forced to, but prior to that, they won't go on it. Uh, our phys ed classes, uh, we, we get one or two or three rolled ankles or knees a week. Um, if, if it was, if you haven't been on it, take a walk on it one day, okay? From the time I was principal, uh, two thousand and five, there's been discussions with various people about, uh, fixing the field, replacing the field. Uh, my first, uh, week in office of, uh, the superintendent, um, I was visited by the then-mayor to talk about the backfield. And there's been discussion, um, some of you, some of the board members, uh, were involved in discussions with, with the mayor, with the council, with other agencies to see what would be the most creative way, uh, to get the field done. Uh, those discussions, for the most part, never came to fruition. Uh, the referendum didn't came to, come to fruition. Um, so I have made a point of working with Mr. Kelly to try to build up capital reserve to the point where we could do the field. Uh, where we don't have to give up ownership of the field, where we don't have to give up ownership of the property. Um, where we could have a safe, um, an inclusive field for our, have, uh, our high school programs, uh, both phys ed classes and primarily as a practice field. It's nearly not big enough to be a game field, but as a practice field, to alleviate some of the pressure we have with that. And to also provide the community, because recreation has used the field. Back in the day when the YMCA was here, they used the field, the lacrosse program used the field. Um, it would give the community a better surface. And then also the aesthetics. We have spent, uh, what, nine million dollars or ten million dollars on renovating the high school and this fence and this field, uh, don't look very good. So we are at the point now where we can do it within the budget. And the budget is here, we have to get it into the budget. Um, connecting all the dots to how to do it is, uh, a discussion for the other day, uh, to have, but, um, it, it, it needs to be done because it's, it's a big piece of property that can't be utilized effectively or safely. And quite frankly, not very aesthetic to a, a building that we tried to, tried to improve. So, like Mr. Kelly said, like anything that goes in the budget, until there's a, a requisition that becomes a purchase order, that becomes signed, that becomes a bill, that becomes approved, it doesn't get paid, right? But it has to be in the budget so we can go forward. Okay?
Thank you. And finally, I'll just run through this quickly, but, uh, we, we discuss this one every year, but this is the, uh, district cost per pupil. Uh, the source of this information is the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, that's a new Department of Education, uh, publication. It's on the website. It's, it's interesting if you, uh, if you have an interest in data. Uh, twenty-one separate indicators, we're looking at the budgetary per pupil cost, which broadly considers costs that are common to all districts and are therefore comparable. District factor groups, uh, this, these are, uh, categorization by the state, going back to nineteen seventy-five, last updated in two thousand, but this is a, uh, categorization of all school districts based on their local socioeconomic, um, circumstances, uh, such as, uh, percentages of adults with high school diploma, occupational status, unemployment rate, individuals in poverty, median family incomes. So the next page shows just some examples of who's in what district factor group. Uh, just, your group A is a lot, a lot of the larger cities in New Jersey. Uh, Rutherford is in GH, um, so that's a higher socioeconomic category. Uh, category J is the highest, and as I said, these haven't been updated since two thousand, so, uh, who knows what they would actually look like? There might be, there, there very well might be some shifts in here, but this is what's in place right now. So, uh, with that in mind, um, I went and determined the, uh, budgetary cost per pupil for districts, other districts in Bergen County, uh, high school districts, uh, K-12 districts, um, in, uh, in, some of them are in our, uh, district factor groups, some of them are not. But you'll see, if you look at this, there are nine districts here. The one furthest to the left is TNEC. Um, the orange bar is the, I'm sorry, the blue bar is the twenty-twenty-one actual expenditures for the districts. The orange bar is the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. These are the most recent numbers. Um, and you'll see, uh, TNEC has budgeted over twenty-five thousand dollars per pupil. And again, these are the budgetary costs per pupil. These are broadly comparable from district to district. Rutherford has, uh, has, in all the years of doing this, always been the lowest spending of these nine districts. Uh, somehow crept up to number eight of nine, and I suspect that was actually Leonia, uh, sliding in the other direction. Uh, but we're, we're spending at about two-thirds of the rate of what TNEC is, the, uh, per pupil. Uh, and then off to the right, you see the average for these nine districts. That's the district factor group average. We're substantially below that. And the, uh, the far-right bars are the New York, New Jersey State average. That's every district in the state. We're substantially below that too. Uh, largely this comes about because years ago, prior to the School Funding Reform Act, the, uh, school, uh, boards were able to increase tax levies or whatever the voters would approve by, uh, the s- School Funding Reform Act, not only did it cap you at two percent, but it also eliminated that public vote as long as you kept within that two percent plus or minus allowable adjustments. So at that point, everybody's capped at two percent. Prior to that, districts could go for ten percent. If, if their public approved it, then they could do it, and that builds in, of course, to the base year after year after year. Um, so I don't think, from, from what I've seen of Rutherford, I don't think Rutherford's ever like that a whole lot. I think there were a couple outlier years where there was a, uh, larger tax levy increase, but, uh, I think that's where that comes from, but that means that we're not going to catch up with anybody. But it's just interesting to show, if you look at the programs we have in place and, uh, you know, and on all the work we're doing here, I think you see, uh, that we got a, a big bang for our buck, which is not to say anything about TNEC or Midland Park, but, uh, but we do well with the, the, the funds we do have.
Joe.
Yes.
The, the state average, is that GH districts across the state or is that every district?
Everybody.
Yeah, I just would like to add, uh, first of, I don't know, you still have to do over the timeline, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Kelly and, and everybody who worked on the budget. I, I, I just want to, I just want to mention that, you know, it's my ninth year, I guess, uh, doing, sitting in this chair and, um, the thirteen in the principal's chair in the last twenty years. Aside from the year that Governor Christie came in with, um, I guess we call that the St. Patrick's Day massacre, uh, when all of a sudden these major cuts came and we had to outsource custodians and all kinds of things just to get the ballot, you know, the budget through. Uh, to me, this was the most trying year going into this. Uh, I had tremendous, um, uh, concerns. And, uh, those concerns would have come to a reality without the allowable, without the state recognizing those concerns, without allowable allowance. Um, you know, when, um, we don't get the state aid, it's only been the last ten days that we knew what our state aid number was and we knew about the allowable, I think within seven days, we found out about the allowable increase, not even. Um, and yet the statutory requirement of getting the budget to them in time doesn't change. And you really can't make decisions until you know, okay? And, um, and, you know, you, in terms of balancing the budget, there's things that we could look at, like we look, to, to keep programs going, to keep a maintenance going, we spend, when I say we, I'm being very unfair. Joe spends, uh, time, um, finding, uh, lease opportunities to spread out costs and, um, ways to work things around and where to, where to do accounting maneuvers to make sure we can balance and not have to cut programs. But we looked at, if we just had just the state aid without that allowance, uh, we would have had to cut programs, absolutely, one hundred percent. And the one thing I have hoped until the day I'm, uh, no longer sitting in this chair, and I don't know, you know, when that will be, but I may be laying in the, on a, a table at some point with, um, you know, uh, talking, uh, with a mic over my head. But no, I, I, I hope I never have to do that. I hope I never have to make that recommendation. Um, because it, it's, it's, it's what makes us who we are. When you hear the student rep talk about athletics and the arts and community service and fundraising and all of that, all of that comes from being able to have all these programs. When you hear her talk about and Dr. Alati talk about what happens on an athletic team or in a player in a band in terms of the life lessons and the camaraderie that gets formed, that's all programs. They're not mandated programs. You can have a high school without a play. You can have a high school without a basketball team. So you can have a high school without the custodian or the bus driver that you see every day and you know. So I, I want you to understand the, uh, the amount of effort, uh, uh, it took, uh, from Joe and his office in a short window of time just to make sure we don't, he doesn't have to come across the hall and give me that bad news and I have to make those kind of decisions and recommendations. This is a very tough year and it was brought on not by anything that we did in this community. It was brought on by the rampant inflation that we're being hit with. Um, and the, and the increase in, in, in the health benefits, the increase in transportation, the increase in salaries. Yeah, and it's what we all face at home. It's just what, where we're at right now. So I, I hope, um, the board and the community understands that. Um, it's a maintenance budget. We're not really adding, we're adding staff because we have to, to meet a couple of student needs. We're not really adding much else. We're doing necessary maintenance as a maintenance budget. But to maintain it, the costs have gotten a lot steeper. But to maintain it, the costs have gotten a lot steeper. So again, I thank you and everybody who was involved in working with this. And you know, we had, I think, a very good finance committee meeting last Monday, it seems like a lot longer ago than that, when we went through a lot of this stuff. And I appreciate the board's involvement in that.
And if I may, one thing I didn't include here, and I was deliberate, was remember a year ago, we were talking about Chapter 44, which was a new health benefits regulation that went into effect a couple of years ago, and it drastically eliminated the number of choices there were and created new choices for health benefit plans for our staff. And it was designed so that any savings realized would go back to the taxpayer. Well, last year, remember, they hit us with about a $300,000 reduction to our tax levy. I was able to successfully appeal that because they were wrong. So it was it was that simple. This year, I thought they were going to hit us again, and they did not. So I'm grateful for that, but that's still lurking out there, and I think that whole thing sunsets in '28, so we could have a couple more years of of this looming on the horizon. So I'm trying to deal with it proactively, but so far, that has not impacted us this year, so. Okay, the last slide I have, just very quickly, is the next steps. We did get the state aid figures on March 2nd, as as noted. The finance committee did meet last Monday, March 6th. Thank you very much, Mr. Bogosian and the the crowd. Then tonight, I'm seeking, we are seeking your approval to submit the preliminary budget to the county office for their review. That is due by next Monday, the 20th. It's not just the budget, there's a whole bunch of supporting documentation they want to see, too. So I am in the process of pulling that together, and will continue to do that. They have about a month to review it, and then we have to have a public hearing on the budget, which is scheduled for Monday, April 24th. So we'll we'll review the budget again at that point. We'll talk about any changes there might be that they requested. They usually do not. And then I'll be looking for final BOE approval of the budget at that point, and at that point, we're we're a go. So, any questions? Mr. Conti?
Yeah, so thanks for putting this together, first and foremost. It's fantastic. And I know we've, over the past week, we've had a bunch of discussions at the committee level, going through all this stuff, and it's, and even, I can't thank you enough for all the back and forth and answering our questions and stuff. One one question I do have, and it wasn't clear in here, and maybe I just missed it because I've been having a little audio problem over on my side of the room, that the allowable adjustment above the 2% cap, that is for a single year, right? That that's not, that's not like going forward every year from here on after. It's it's a bigger, bigger number.
Well, it's something we consider every year. So if the board approves it, it does go into the base for next year, so it is out there, but it doesn't mean that next year...
But it could be 2% next year, and then that's it.
And then, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's happened, like we said, six times in the last 10 years. The money's ranged right from, Mr. Kelly, from like 200,000 to 800,000. It is a one-shot deal based on those factors that, as Kelly indicated, they consider, right? But it does go into your, your base is there. So your 2% is slightly higher next year because you have a bigger number this year. So in a way, it stays with you, but it's not that extra money every year, no.
Yeah, I mean, the the...
So for example, next year, if our enrollment stays, you know, relatively within norm, right? If the if the health benefits level out, drop a little bit, we may not see it. If the opposite happens, we may see it again.
Of course.
And we haven't seen it the last few years because they've had a premium reduction, so...
And you, you know, you made a good point there, Mr. Hurley, that that we, you know, we do everything we can not to cut programs and not to cut staff, and coming out of COVID now, we, you know, we've done, we've done all this effort, and I feel like we're finally have momentum and we're back on track with with sports, with plays, with activities, and, you know, not doing any of this stuff would would certainly would be effectively us taking our foot off the gas. And I don't think we can afford to do that now.
No, and and look, I don't think we 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 should ever, I mean, unless the sky falls, we should never. I mean, again, that, you know, being in a school building for most of my life, right? What makes a school is everything about it. You know? And and the problem is, you know, when you look at budget cuts, there's not, there's not a lot of fluff anywhere in this budget. There's, you know, building budgets are are a couple hundred thousand dollars to get all the supplies for a building. You can't cut there, that's nickel and diming. When you look at, when you're talking a million dollars, you're talking positions. And positions are programs.
Yep.
So, you know, we work very hard, you know, as a team, as an administrative team, to figure out ways to to not only maintain, but to add and save within the budget. And it's not easy, but it's why we're all here, it's why you folks are here.
Yeah.
I mean, you're giving up your time, you know, you're giving to the community to make sure our kids have good schools with good programs. That's that's why we're all here.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Jones?
I think you should be complimented, both of you, especially Mr. Kelly and all the work that you've done on this. It had to be extraordinary amount of work. And congratulations to both of you with a fine job.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. Ms. Med?
I would just like to thank everybody that's interested in the field out there, talking about how many years we've seen it out there, and my, I can't tell you how many of my children have actually become, well, they're better people. And also, all the children that grew up on that field and had hobbling, and we could never get the field at a time because it wasn't good enough. Sports really kept a lot of these kids that my kids grew up with off the streets, you know? And at that time, when I first got on the board, alcohol was a big problem and nothing to do. So right now, when I I look back, I'm thinking of all these children that have gone through sports in this town. So many of them are police in town, they're in the army now, they're, you know, you, I call the police station for something about trash, and it's, hi, this is Amel. You know, I I go to every party and they're all there, and I'm so proud of them, really, through sports, and it's so important that that field be up to par. People come through the town, they see it. You know, you go to these other towns, wow, look at those fields. And I hope we have a a great field that attracts a young kid that'll turn out off the streets and be happy.
Mr. Mazo?
Yeah, so this is my seventh year on the board, and Mr. Kelly, you usually come to me with, this is a maintenance budget, I've been on the finance committee. This year, it feels like budgeting at home, where everything has gone up, up, and up, like everyone else did. I certainly appreciate the effort. I I wish that it wasn't the case, more than I can express, but I also know, having been part of negotiations, I know our CBAs and our agreements with our our teachers are there, and I I think that they were, they should be commended on being reasonable and working with the district in that process. And, you know, I know the challenge of hiring and retaining quality educators in our district, so I I get it. Health insurance is something that, you know, I know in my my private world that, you know, we're dealing with the costs. It's just, it's, yeah, so it's, I I do agree, it's unfortunate. I appreciate Mr. Conti's point on what this actualizes at. Yeah, as far as the field, I just have one question, Mr. Hurley. Just to be clear, the field is unusable in the conditions it's in.
Unusable is too strong of a word because you're going to see people using it. Is it a field that anybody's happy using? No. Do we have injuries because of it? Yes. Would our, a team, would a high school team want to practice on it? If they had any choice but that? Absolutely not.
I get it. Okay. Yeah, I I appreciate the emphasis that it'll go through buildings and grounds, that scope will be looked at. To me, I think that's important. I agree with Ms. Med's comments that, you know, having a field our students can be safe on, can be proud as a district to have. Yeah, but the scope is something that at some point, I'd like to, you know, have some discussions about. But thank you, I appreciate all the effort, folks.
Dr. Z?
Well, with the healthy share, it's increased 15.6%. What was that in in dollars? Because I was trying to do it myself.
Between the two years of 15 and 13, it was over a million.
So I had a 1.2 million ahead, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Pre-year increase, not, yeah.
Right. If you add up, like I said, if you add up all the increases in dollars, is, that's why, like, I wasn't feeling too good, you know? Because the numbers, even with the allowable increase that we're talking about, even with some of the money, it it doesn't add up. And that's where we had to really roll up our sleeves and figure out, and again, I'm using that "we" very poorly, I shouldn't say "we," and figure out how to how to massage it and make it to, get it to balance. The numbers were were astronomical.
For the most part, for the far most part, all the increases are things that we have no control of.
Right.
You just get it, right?
Right.
Right. So that question, what's this, just as a reminder, like, nothing about the referendum dollars is in our budget.
No.
Correct.
Right, that's everything separate, and that's something, we'll come later about how we're under budget there.
Yes.
We are, right? I don't know if, you know, I don't know what you say.
We're filing numbers, but okay, we're getting there. Just a reminder that...
We will talk about that, that was, that's been Mr. Sprig's question.
We have, we have a, no, we have a healthy, it's going to be a healthy, you know, amount of money that, and and again, that that didn't just happen either. You know, a credit to Epic, to PSA, to Mr. Kelly, to the building principals that were in the buildings that were, to Mr. Gamboa and Mr. Paterno before him, you know, constantly overseeing and pushing back and questioning and making sure things are being done the right way. So, you know, we were, and we, and we, and quite frankly, we got a little lucky. We we got in with some of our steel and things like that right ahead of when things really ran through the roof. You know, a month or two delayed, we would have had a, would be, we'd have a different conversation right now. Okay? And we were, right, I mean, you know, three years ago today was when the world shut down, right? And we were already off to the races, getting going. So we just got in under, I remember thinking, well, you know, this thing's going to last like a month, and and we'll get in the building, start doing some work, get a head start on things, you know? Well, we got to, it didn't last a month. And so, you know, so yes, we're in a good, we're in a pretty good place there.
Mr. Hurley?
Question about the field renovations. Would the intent be that the community groups would use it also?
The attempt would be exactly what it is now. We use the field till 5:00 or 5:30 or whatever the time is, and then community groups use them, but we don't use them.
And the weekends?
It would be no, yes, it would be no, it would be no different. But again, I want to, you know, when we when we redid our gyms, nothing changed with the community. When when they redid Tryon Field, nothing changed with our use of it, right? It's the same, you know, we're not changing anything. But again, the the idea is, I I don't think anybody who's ever been on the field, or been near the field, or even looked at the field, or maybe even flew in a plane and looked down, because sometimes you can see the high school when you fly, and, you know, is ever going to say that field shouldn't be fixed, right? The question tonight is not about fixing the field. The question is having the having the money in there so that we can do it. You know? And there's a lot of things that, and again, I'm going to contradict myself now, it won't be the first time, you know, let's not talk about it, but, you know, drainage is a big part of putting a field in. So they they can't see what's on the ground, right? They have a pretty good guess. They start digging it up, all of a sudden, they get surprised. You look at some different monies, right? Retaining wall, we think, they think, needs some loving care and repair, but doesn't need to be replaced. But that retaining wall goes from about this high to about five feet high. That's a lot of wall, right? But when they take away all the dirt on the other side of the wall, maybe what they're seeing there doesn't look as repairable, patchable of what's on the outside. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to think about and know about. But we have the money that we put aside, and right now, we're in a, we're in an area where this is what we can move and not hurt other projects, right, that need to get done. And, you know, we may be like the kid going to the store and say, you know, I have 10 cents, how much candy can I get with the 10 cents? But we, but if we can get a field, we got to get a field. But that's, that discussion's for another day. You know, the budget discussion is having it in place, just like we have salary lines in place, right? And sometimes we have money left over in salaries, and it goes into capital reserve or goes into surplus, and some years, we have to rob from Peter to pay Paul to meet the salaries. But we have to have it in the budget. Okay, so tonight's a budget conversation.
Other questions or comments? All right. I just have to say, one of the things I really appreciate is the depth of comments that everyone's made, and oftentimes, I don't make comments. I, later in my career, I try to talk less and listen to others. So hearing everyone's comments, you really, I think, shared a lot of my sentiments, and you brought up a lot of really important points around thinking about being fiscally prudent and part of our job to be fiduciaries and having to prioritize what is so important and critical to the district. The only thing I would add is that if, you know, we we have a budget hearing in April, and before that, if there are those in the community who have questions, it's it's important that they hear all of these points. So I think it's important to make sure people know that video of this evening goes on the website. It should go on in the next two days, starts at 8:02 PM, the conversation about the budget. So, you know, if there are questions out there, I think referring people to that video so they can listen to the entire presentation, hear Mr. Kelly, questions from, whoa, different members of the board. I think that's an important part of process and something I think we can point people toward as well. So just want to thank everyone again for all their comments, and and Mr. Kelly and Mr. Hurley, Mr. Bogosian, and the rest of the finance committee for all your hard work. So with that, I believe we're going to move on now to the report of the superintendent.
Right. I will be very, very brief, just a couple of comments because we're already pushing 9:00 o'clock. I want to just mention that, once again, this year, the REA, the Rutherford Education Association, will be holding their March Madness on this Saturday, the 25th of March, at Pierpont's Gym. That's a fun fair, a festival, you know, for kids and adults alike, but the admission's a couple of cans of, or non-perishable food products. And a lot of food gets donated to the food pantry, and it's a fun day, it's a good day for the community. So thank the REA, and Ms. Fensick's here, thank them for doing this every year, and if you get a chance to get out and support it. Unfortunately, this year will be the first year I don't get out to support it because I'm going to be attending the County Job Fair for Education up in Saddle River on that same morning. I think it's, this year especially, is important to to be there, and we have got some good people that we've hired from that fair. So a few of the other administrators and I will be up there at the job fair that day. Currently, the high school juniors are taking the graduation proficiency assessment. Just real quick, to understand what we're dealing with sometimes with these, with the DOE and Pearson, the test company, the test was starting today, we had everybody in place, and they go to log in, and you can't get in. Statewide, you can't get in, and no word from Pearson. So we get about 20-minute delay, finally, we can get in. Some schools in the state who are at different schedules, starting a little earlier, had to cancel the test today, do a makeup test. So, you know, kids are coming in, ready for a graduation assessment, and on their end, it crashes statewide. We mentioned the plays, I don't have to do that, the Academy Decathlon. And the last thing I'll mention in passing is, I know I let you all know before about Mr. Frazier getting the Athletic Director of the Year for the state of New Jersey, which is quite an honor. He actually gets the award this week, Thursday night, at a dinner at the state convention in Atlantic City. So congratulations to him for a well-deserved honor. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Hurley? Hearing none, we'll move on to the report of the president. I don't have much to add. I just want to thank Mr. Hurley for putting in the upcoming events. In the memos that he sends to us, it's one of our board goals to make sure we continue to be actively engaged in the community. So there's a number of upcoming events here. I was going to congratulate Mr. Frazier as well. Quite, quite an honor to be the New Jersey Athletic Director of the Year. So, yeah, I I think I'll just leave it there. We've already had a lot of rich discussion. Any questions or... Any questions or comments for me in my twenty five second board report? All right, then hearing none at nine o'clock, we're going to open the meeting to the public for any questions related to the agenda this evening. All right, hearing none at nine P M., we're going to close the meeting to the public. And we are going to move on now to new business where there is action to be taken. And we'll start with personnel, Mrs. Ahmed.
Thank you. We have tonight twenty nine motions, twenty seven, twenty eight, and tonight we're added on as you came in today. So bear with me, I'm going to try to put these all together as fast as I can. Number one is resignation for Ms. Met Wettzel, special ed teacher at the high school. Two, Sweene Silva, resignation as a site director for Bulldog Care. Number three, Ace Ozer, resignation, teacher assistant at kindergarten. Four, Majori Constantino, to approve as a biology teacher for Rutherford High School. Five, Jennifer Ursulisi, long term substitute teacher at Rutherford High School. Six, Carol Drews, as a, to approve also as a long term substitute at the high school. Seven, Robert Savello, to approve as a part time bus driver for this high school. Eight, Gloria Pack, part time bus assistant for Rutherford High School. Nine, Caitlin Anella, to approve an adjustment in the date as a long term substitute social studies teacher in the high school. Ten, home instructors, to approve Jennifer Kessler as a home instructor for this year, February twenty twenty three. Employee seventeen sixty two, now, this is where it gets a little crazy with these different tweaks on disability leave. So eleven is approving an adjustment in dates for disability leave with pay, and you could read that rest of it. Number twelve, employee two five eight eight, adjustment dates and leave of absence under the Family Leave and Medical Leave Act. Thirteen, employee twenty two thirteen, proven adjustment in dates for disability leave with pay, and it continues as the special tweaks that that would need. Fourteen, employee twenty three fifty, this one's kind of confusing. Adjusting dates and disability leave, following the birth of her baby, absence under the New Jersey Leave Act, U S Family Medical Leave concurrently without pay, and so on and so forth. Employee sixteen ninety one, it's another confusing one, you could read that, birth of her baby, follow leave of absence, medical leave act concurrently. Sixteen was to rescind the disability leave with pay for employee nineteen twenty seven. Employee nineteen twenty seven is to approve a disability leave with pay for the use of remaining six days for maternity leave. Eighteen, employee seventeen thirty seven, approval leave of absence, U S Family Medical Leave Act without pay. Nineteen, employee fourteen ninety five, approval leave of absence with pay. Twenty, Pierpont Summer Enrichment Program curricular writers, and that's to approve the following teachers as the curricular writers for the Pierpont School Summer Enrichment Program at the rate of fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed twenty hours per person. This is funded through ARP slash Esser Grants. And that's for Alexandria Demetris, Erin White, and Burko Demerbeluca. Twelve, Pierpont Summer Enrichment Program, following teacher as a coordinate coordinator for the Pierpont School Summer Enrichment Program, fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed twenty hours, funded through the ARP and E S S R grant funds. Burke Demerbeluca, Demerbeluca. Twenty two, Pierpont Summer Enrichment Program, to prove following teachers for the Pierpont Summer School, and the rates are fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed forty eight, forty eight hours per person, funded through that same thing, ARP Esser Grant Funds, Linda Johansson, Rebecca Macri, Alala Gazandria, Alexandra Demetris, Robin Zach, Sarah Bermudez, Alexandria Medina. Twenty three, sixth class, less than a semester, and that's approved, a pro, a prorated stipend of fifty seven ninety two for the following union school teachers for a sixth grade class, sixteen consecutive, more than two consecutive weeks, but less than a semester during twenty two, twenty three school year. Union School Anne Collins, Dawn Jenjian, Korziewski, William Gambola, and Colleen Click. Twenty four substitute teachers for the twenty two, twenty three school year, Maria Verdicchio, Stephen Way, Heather Coleman, Aparna Pandurathal, sorry if I killed that name. Twenty five substitute teacher assistants for twenty two, twenty three school year, effective in March, Maria Verdicchio, Stephen Way, Heather Coleman, Aparna Pandurathal. Twenty three, twenty six, travel reimbursements. And you have the whole chart there listed for Cheyenne Richardson, Joseph Kelly, Sarah Raylock, Madison DeBakey, and Janet Smith, Jessica Barluto, and Frank Vetrielli. Twenty seven, Gabriela Liriani, to approve as a long term substitute music teacher. Am I okay there?
Mrs. Ahmed, on twenty six, where it says travel reimbursements. You also want to mention the one on the addendum, that should be under Personnel, not Curriculum and Instruction, on the bottom of the addendum sheet.
On the, on the addendum, it was.
Twenty six is travel reimbursement.
Right, it was mismarked on the addendum, if you look on the addendum.
So there's one other travel reimbursement that's on the addendum for twenty six?
Twenty six is listed as twice, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So where am I going now?
We're just adding Mr. Gambola to the travel reimbursement.
Oh, okay, since we have twenty seven over here. I told Frank, didn't I read his name?
Yeah, but there's an add on, you you did twenty six already, there was just, it was.
Twenty seven is Gabriela Liriani.
Right.
Okay. Gabriela Liriano, as a long term substitute music teacher, for DM one hundred sixty dollars. Elizabeth Verstasco for twenty eight, as a part time teacher assistant in kindergarten center. And twenty nine, Tamara Lee, to approve as a confidential assistant to the business administrator in the business office. And I guess that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from board members? Mr. Bogosian?
I assume that the Frank Ferrari's, that's like pass through mine from.
Correct.
All right, Mrs. Ahmed, do you want to move those?
So the board's permission, I'd like to move Personnel items one through twenty nine.
All right, we have a second. Mr. Conti, any last questions or comments? All right, hearing none, Mr. Kelly, please take role.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
All right, thank you, we'll move on now to curriculum and instruction, Ms. Jones?
Thank you. We did have a C and I meeting on Monday, March sixth, where we talked about curriculum guides and textbook approval. Tonight, there are eleven resolutions that are put forth at the recommendation of the superintendent. Number one, comprehensive equity plan for the school year twenty three, twenty four. Number two, out of district placements. Three, field trips now tolling one hundred and nineteen. Four, coordinated transportation services. Resolutions five through nine are H I B decisions. Resolution ten is curriculum guides and textbook approvals. Lots of ones for health and Pizz Ed, computer science, fine, practical and performing arts, and world language. And eleven is a stress less summer program where invited students at no class will be invited to the program on July fifth and July sixth. It'll be run by Emily Bergman, Kim Hudson, Carrie Anne Romano, and Jeff Dorn, all part of our team. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jones. Questions or comments from board members? Dr. Racine?
The curriculum changes, are they just like minor tweaks or as usual?
The curriculum revisions were, the curriculum revisions were simply interdisciplinary activities and and you had to show, you know, in other disciplines that these subjects are being, there were minor tweaks, yes. There were no major changes or major standards that would.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Jones, you want to move this?
I moved resolutions one to eleven under curriculum instruction.
All right, we have a second. Mr. Mazone, any last questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Kelly, please take role.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to finance, Mr. Bogosian.
Yes, we had a finance committee meeting last Monday, comments are included in the packet. We reviewed the budget drivers for this year, which we all saw just twenty minutes ago, as well as the plans for capital expenditures. Before we get into motions, you all see a email from our bank, B C B Bank, assuring us that they are well capitalized in light of the banks that just went under over the weekend. Thankfully, we do not bank with a bank heavily close to startup banks. So that's all on that. So tonight, we have eight motions to consider. Motion one is to approve Mr. Kelly's submission of the budget, the preliminary budget that we just reviewed to the county. Motion two is to affirm the monitoring of our annual travel budget. Motion three is to approve the submission of the semi-program's corrective action plan to the DOE. Motion four is the routine approval of bills. Motion five is to accept the donation of four cases of hand sanitizer. Six is to decline to submit the funds available via a grant opportunity. And motion seven and eight are related to the coordinated transportation agreement with the South Bergen Joint.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Looks like Joe might have a question.
What's that?
It looks like you might have a question.
Do I?
No, you're just, your face.
Yeah, I'm wondering, we think coordinated transportation services were also in curriculum and instruction, and I'm trying to figure out why. I'll get that sorted, sorted out.
They should be with us, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
So I'd like to move motions one through eight.
All right, great, we have a second. Mr. Spraberry, any last questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Kelly, please take role.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Was that eight and a half, yes, or? All right. We're going to move on to policy now, Mr. Healy.
Yes. We did not have a committee meeting since our last board meeting. And tonight, there's one resolution being put forth as the second reading, as listed for approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Healy, questions or comments? So just to confirm, this is the second reading tonight that we're approving? Do you want to move those, Mr. Healy?
Yes, I'd like to move them.
All right, we have a second. Anyone, Dr. Racine, thank you, any last questions or comments?
Will Joe be telegraphing the notices to the board about the board meetings? That was my only question from last.
If you'd like.
All right, Mr. Kelly, please take role.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, moving on to buildings and grounds, Mr. Spraberry?
Good evening, we've got three, three motions put forth to the board, recommendation of the superintendent. First is the lockers at Rutherford High School Mortimer Wing. Second is security cameras at Rutherford High, Union Middle, Pierpont, and Kindergarten. I'd like to comment, I think that's a great addition to all the schools, so.
Yes, noted, it was necessitated by changes in pedestrian traffic flow, so, so, yeah, it is a great addition.
It's a great benefit to the community, I mean, for the schools itself, so I think that's just, with everything going on, it's just a great addition. Three is change orders at Lincoln, Washington Elementary Schools, and it's great to see a credit back from one of the contractors, so.
Yeah, the seventeen thousand is the final, so we're going to be, get the final paperwork, but that that closes it out, so.
And before we approve these, I'd like to also add that, Mr. Hurley, you said earlier, kudos to our contractors, we haven't seen the numbers yet on the budget, but overall, what their actions at the beginning of COVID and buying materials saved this district millions of dollars. And so, I'd like to put forth the three motions to be approved by the board.
All right.
I just want to follow up on the comment Mr. Spraberry made about the cameras. The the additional, dishes of building, right, and new cameras. Then looking at, as Mr. Kelly said, some of the new nooks and crannies that were were created, and new traffic flow allowed us to get additional cameras through referendum money. We had, we have cameras that are old and and DVRs that were not working. We were able to discover something that sounds like a Dick Tracy watch, an encoder, and these encoders allowed the cameras to function at a pretty good level. I mean, not as, not as good and not as sharp as the new ones, but pretty good. And so now, we're, we're pretty much a hundred percent with all of our cameras, even the ones that go back to, you know, the two thousand and five. And the, and also now, we're in a situation where we're web based, where we weren't. And going forward to replace the older cameras to get that crisper picture is a cheaper proposition than all the infrastructure. So we're really jumped from a not so great spot to a very good spot within six months, so it's, it's good, it's very good. And, you know, and and just, you know, everybody looks at the big thing, right, that the horrific thing that might happen. It's, these cameras come in handy on a daily basis for the little things that happen in a building. You know, whether it be a little bit of vandalism, or a kid who's missing a class, or it's a little bit of nonsense going on, you know? Pictures don't lie. So it's, so it's the day to day stuff that's really been enhanced in terms of overall climate of a building.
Thank you, so Mr. Spraberry moved those, we have a second. Mr. Healy, any last questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Kelly, please take role.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Mr. Bogosian?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Spraberry?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
All right, thank you, we're going to move on now to old business, any old business, Ms. Jones?
We covered the the play and the tunnel and all the improvements and that, but one more thing, we did, some of this went to Mr. Mazone and Mr. Hurley was there to the Rutherford High All Sports Booster Club Dinner. This is the winter sports, they've gone back to what they used to do with the all sports, winter sports, and spring sports, three dinners. Mrs. Alati was there also, I know you couldn't get there, but the one thing I just want to mention is because your son was given a honorable mention on the fifty five meter hurdles, so that's James Alati, who is now a junior. And Max Mazone, our dentist's son, got a lovely, lovely, I forgot the word. His coach spoke very well of his performance this year as a senior, and he will be going to college at Scranton's, Penn State Scranton's campus, and he will be playing basketball. So he's looking forward to that, too, and so I'm very proud of our, our board members' voice.
Awesome.
You know, can you help me out for a minute, because you have the names in front of you, I don't know the name.
I'm sorry?
I just want, I'm going to ask you for a name, and you're going to help me out. One of the things that I was kind of aware of, but not really aware of, I just want to mention it, because I think it's, our wrestling team had one of their best seasons in years. And we had a young lady who who was a wrestler, the only female wrestler, I mean, she came out to wrestle. There is female wrestling now in the state, but we didn't have a team. She practiced and trained with the guys, and she wound up making, I think she placed sixth in the state.
First team all county.
And first team all county, even females.
Catherine Weigl.
Say that again?
Catherine Weigl.
Weigl, yep. So, I mean, you know, we had some great seasons, swim team had a great year, track team won the league, wrestle. But I just thought, you know, to be that, that young lady who says, this is a sport I want to do, and you don't have, you know, you don't have really a girl's team. Now, it took me back, I always say twenty years ago, it's really forty years ago, when we didn't have a girl's soccer team and had two young ladies come out. ladies come out to play soccer on the boys' team. And they lasted one, four years, and one, three years. And, and one of those, well, one of them unfortunately passed away in an accident, but one of the young ladies, I haven't heard from in 40 years, and she reached out to me. She's a lawyer in, in Pennsylvania, and in anniversary of Title IX, they were highlighting things, and she wanted to get some information from me because she was, she wanted to highlight the fact that we had her, you know, on the boys' team and playing. And so somewhere in Pennsylvania, I hope they said nice things about me and us. I think they did. But it, it really is, you know, I give credit to that, to that young lady. It has to be tough to do that. I know what those two girls I coached 40 years ago went through to play on the boys' team. And, and again, it's a step towards maybe, you know, I don't want to say it's on budget night, a program, but, you know, it really is a credit to her. So it was nice to go to the dinner and hear all the, all the success that, you know, was really across the board that the team set.
Thank you, Ms. Sprayberry.
Yeah, I attended my first Rutherford High School PTA meeting, and, you know, I got to give credit to Mr. Morado. His energy, passion, what he brings to, about the school, and about the students, and the teachers, and the staff. I mean, it's just, it gets you pumped. You get pumped up being around the guy, you know? And, you know what, you know, when I was joking with Miss, with Poppy about going in there, and she's just as energetic as he is. He's like, you know, because she came to my office like five, six times. He goes and just, he goes, it was so exciting to see students so pumped up about helping their, their fellow schools and stuff out. And he's like, he just really reiterated how much, how often it happens about kids coming in and starting clubs, all the different clubs are getting started, all the different initiatives happening and stuff. And, you know, he's like, he goes, I tell them, let's find a way. He goes, I just don't say no to them, you know? And it was just, it just felt like you said, what makes the schools? That's the stuff that makes the schools, guys, guys like that, that, you know, the administrators that go above and beyond for their students and the rest of the school system. So kudos to everybody involved in that.
I'll certainly share your, I know, maybe I won't share your comments with him. He's, he's already, he already tells me how good he is all the time. So, no, I'll certainly share your comments with him. Thank you for that.
Any other comments? Yep, Mr. Healy?
One thing and a question, but the first thing is, thank you, Mr. Kelly, for pointing out the New Jersey School Association Financial Conference, March 1st. I attended that. And part of the program was, to me, was sponsored, but there was a company called EduStaff, E-D-U Staff. I don't know if you ever heard of them?
No.
But they actually offer substitutes with the option to hire. And I just want to bring that.
Thank you.
Question is this, whose jurisdiction is it for intersection signs for crosswalks? Who would that be? Is it the district, or is it the town?
No, see, police in the, in the borough.
It's the borough?
And working with the police, yeah.
The safety, okay. Thank you. Because I observe a section near my home, but it's Lincoln and Woodland, and the kids, you know, they, it's, they're very cautious, of course, because of the heavy traffic, but there's no signs right there for the crosswalk, you know, which, straight, you know, not far from.
If you want to reach out to them, or if you want to send me some information, and I'll forward it, whatever's easier for you.
Julie is the director of traffic for the Rutherford Police Department.
Yeah.
So I can't remember Julie's last name, but her-
Singan Dole.
Seegler.
Singan Dole.
Yeah, so she is, she's the head of traffic and all that, so if you're getting issues, go to Julie.
Okay. Thank you.
She'll work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Sprayberry. Thank you, Mr. Hurley. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Old Business? Hearing none. We'll move on to Legislative Update. Ms. Jones?
We have just one, and it's a good one. Assembly Bill 5193, introduced February 16th, 2023, to the Education Committee, permits high-performing school districts, such as we are, to be monitored by the Department of Education under CUSAC every seven years rather than every three years.
Yeah, now that's just got introduced, and we were at a meeting the other day where they were talking about CUSAC for the, for the poor folks who have it this year, you know, and have it next year. They never even mentioned that bill. I thought they might, but they did not. But that's one of the reasons why it might be on the gurney still, you know? We don't do CUSAC in three years. What the heck? I'll hang around longer.
[laughing]
No, but that would be, you know, you remember, right, up until six years ago, you got a waiver because you were high-performing, and you had to send in a statement of assurance, you had to answer some questions, and they did away with that. And, you know, I think, I think seven years would be good. And also, the folks in Bergen County, I mean, they have, what, how many, 60 school districts?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-five? They have to do like 30-something every three years, and there's three or four of them have to get around and do all that, which takes them away from everything else they have to do. So I think they, they would love it, too.
I remember Aaron Graham talking about that, he had to work harder. Remember Aaron-
Aaron Graham said he worked harder than some states, yeah, yeah. And he's probably right.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Yeah, 9:25 PM, we'll open the meeting to the public for any questions related to or not related to the agenda. All right. At 9:25 PM, we're going to close the meeting to the public, and there is a need for an executive session regarding three student matters. No action to be taken, about five minutes or so. So need a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Bogosian, seconded by Dr. Racine, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are going into executive session. Thank you.